Okay, being six o'clock, we'll call the public hearing to order. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, public hearing for the fiscal year 2026, proposed operating budgets pursuant to Section 6-5A, the Town of Webster Charter. Fiscal year 26, general budget, Mr. Town Administrator?
Well, how would you like me? I can do that now.
[laughing]
How would you like me to do this, Matt? You want me to run through the powerpoint like I did with the selectmen? Or how do you?
Sure.
Leave it up to you.
Yeah, that's fine since...
Okay. That's fine, okay. Yeah.
I did.
Well, usually you take a vote to open the public hearing, I think is what Courtney's recommending.
Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
John was gonna turn the light off over there so we can see the... Okay. Well, I don't know. All right, cool. You know, I was...I know how to do this. Do know how to do this. All right, close enough. There we go. All right, so this was the basically presentation we put together. Me, Tim, and Courtney conspired on this, really to just, you know, again, it's highlights. It's not something, you know, it's not these...I'm not gonna show you line items here unless people wanna see line items. It's so incredibly simple. Now, I don't think I need to run through definitions. I'm happy to. I know this has previously been forwarded to the committee. I don't wanna bore you with such things, but it's helpful for some, especially those who might see this. This information is online now. But if there's anything in particular here that anybody has any questions about, any particularly definitions, I will just point out one specifically, and I have these...you've all heard of the cherry sheet, but does anyone know what that means? Trick question. Okay, go ahead, Will. You know the answer to this one. Matt probably...
Well, the cherry sheet was the color of the paper they originally printed it on, but it's the state aid of...that we receive and take away.
And I couldn't track down how long it's been since it's been called the cherry sheet, but it's been a long, long time before any of us or, I don't know, maybe not all of us. So that's something people don't know. Okay. So the overall proposed budget is $67 million, which is up 8%. Now, again, keep in mind what you're looking at includes the debt exclusion, which is for the school, which is up significantly, which is starting to come into play right now. So that is not a true 8% increase in terms of operations. You'll see 4.19% is the...no, I'm sorry. Let me back one here. Oh, there we go. The overall increase is...I'm sorry, it is 4.19%. But just going through the levy real quick. Prior year levy limit is $28 million. 2.5% is $700,000, new growth $300,000, and the debt exclusion is $5 million this year. And I will get to this at some point, but if you look at those $700,000 and $300,000, that's obviously about a million dollars. And how the...you know, I wanna keep that in context as we go forward here. State aid is up about 6.5%. Most of that's Chapter 78, and local receipts are pretty flat. Other funds are down a little bit, predominantly the larger other funds are your indirect costs, water and sewer indirect costs to supplement the budget. And free cash, again, free cash is, you know, the big deal we're gonna have to talk about a little bit, those of us who haven't already. So our levy for the year, looking at the prior year levy limit, FY 2025, is up. Our discretionary spending from $680 to $275 in 2025 is now corresponding as $708,000 and $300,000. Again, around the million-dollar mark. The debt exclusion, as you can see, is up about $1.1 million. That is what, you know, gives the artificial increase in the overall spending at 8%. That's not the true number. So again, stop me anytime. I don't know if anybody, everybody knows some of these references. I know not everybody knows what new growth is, but the definition's there. I think most people do. But the debt exclusion is the big driver here in terms of the overall percentage, which I think, you know, keeping that in context with the overall spending here. So I can't even read that. It's so small on my own. Okay, yeah. So just of our overall levy calculation, and again, some people find it helpful to see, to visualize rather than just seeing numbers on a page. If you look at, I think, once again, the debt exclusion obviously stands out in terms of our overall tax levy. And again, that's not a...and any kind of a...that's not a judgment, that's nothing, but I think in terms of what people have specifically voted for directly over and above their taxes is such a large piece of our overall budget this year. And overall revenue, again, keeping in mind we have $67 million in revenue. The levy is $34 million of that. $34.5 state aid is $25 million. If you see those percentages, 51% tax levy and 37% state aid. It gets worse than that in terms of the overall relationship here. And we are looking at, again, using proposals to use, actually, $1.3 million in free cash. So that's the overall levy, I mean, the overall revenue picture. The other funds, as I mentioned, that's generally...a good chunk of that is our indirect costs from our water and sewer departments. Local receipts, primarily that's driven by motor vehicle excise. There's really nothing else, Tim, of any...anything really notable in there with the... And those are...we're projecting those reasonably flat, but as you can see, it's about 7% of our overall revenue makeup. Now, this is where it gets a little bit more concerning. If you take out the debt exclusion piece, the, you know, over and above our regular...ordinary tax assessment, you're looking at about $29 million in taxable spending, not attributed to, you know, the debt. And again, 48%. If you look at state aid now, in that context, a 40% of our overall revenue, that's... I think that speaks to a lot of our overall concern, which is not new. The towns, I'm sure, had it for many years. But when you have so much of your overall revenue that's not...that's out of your hands and isn't always predictable, it is very difficult to make plans long-term. The one way we have done that is to put a lot of money away for the rainy day. Between free cash and stabilization, we have about close to $6 million between the two, which is rather, I think, enviable right now by most towns that are going through these difficult opportunities. Go ahead.
A little closer to $12 million between the two.
What did I say?
Said six.
Okay. About six each. Okay. Thank you for...
Which, according to our rating agencies, is about where they want us to be. So even though it sounds like a lot, and from a budgeting standpoint, it is. From a, say, a global outside, it's, like I said, where the rating agencies kinda want us to be.
And that has recently paid off, and maybe Tim can give a little update on that when we're done with this section, just as informational for the Finance Committee. So again, we have a huge chunk of our overall revenue that is not within our control. So proposing about $1.3 million in free cash, now, you know, it doesn't...you don't have to do a whole lot to... You took that out to see even more what the relationship is, but it's something to keep in mind, actually, not just now, but probably well into the future. So overall, our appropriation that we're looking at, there are three major pieces. One is the overall town budget, and I mean, the terminology, it's simple, but I think I don't like it because we are all one town. We're not separate...we're not town-school. So oftentimes, you'll hear me refer to it as the non-school part of the budget, our shared cost, and our overall...then our direct school department budget. And again, you just look at that 8.76% change, but, you know, again, we'll put that into context here in a minute for you. And once again, visualizing what I just told you. This is without the shared costs, and we'll get into what the shared costs are. And I...those of you who have already looked through the presentation, hard copy, you'll already...you'll more or less recall that. So this is the, what I call, the rocket science pie chart. It's 70%, 30%, as is our breakdown when you take out our shared costs. So proposed appropriation is essentially 3.8% for school department and collectively 3.8% for all of our other departments combined. So these are some of the key points here. This recommended budget accommodates all of our contractual requirements. Police Department, if you go through line items, is a level service budget, but it does... The only major increase, well, we have our collective bargaining increases, but in the expenses, there's a significant increase for the software costs for body cameras. This is, I think, about $35,000 new dollars. This was last year, a year and a half ago, we instituted the body cameras, which we had to do. Unfortunately, they charge you for it. So this is the first time we've had to include the major software update for our...or maintenance costs for the body cameras. This is the first year that, I'm sorry, our full-time fire department has been absorbed within the budget. The staffing, we went to a full-time fire department. They really transitioned over the last, let's say, four years. Last year was when we finally had our full, full-time staffing and reduced... Some of you may recall, last year, some of the funding we used was a shift away from our part-time department staff, because obviously you're phasing those out, and that's, for all intents and purposes, there is no part-time firefighters right now. There's some, you know, on the books, but essentially that part of the department doesn't exist. But this is the year when we have...all the staffing is in place and all the funding now is in place. We did have a collective bargaining agreement we completed that actually completed FY 2025. So this is the first full-time year of our...I mean, first full fiscal year of our new fire collective bargaining agreement. And you'll see in the line items, it's about an 8% increase, but over two years, I think it's annualized at about 5% annualized over two years. So it's real...it's pretty...I think it's overall pretty modest, although, you know, this year's budget takes us, you know, takes on paper a pretty good hike because of it. But again, this is a commitment the town made a few years ago, and this is really the culmination of that in how it's hitting the budget. I will also go back in time, and you may recall that when the town had its first retail license establishment, well, one was...it was the first host community agreement. There was a certain revenue that communities get from that. One...Caitlin knows this, right? She have a pained look on your face. So there's the two pieces. One is the personal property tax, and then there's, you know, it was mitigation funds. And mitigation funds to this town were about $350,000 a year. Well, then, the Cannabis Control Commission, which apparently is controlled by the industry, worked through the Cannabis Control Commission to ensure that those mitigation funds are no longer going to be automatic. Those now all have to be documented. Regardless if you had, you know, a host community agreement in place that required that, didn't matter, you know. CCC came in with different rules. So this town lost about $350,000 that had been, you know, again, this is going back about four years, had been targeted really as a financing source for transitioning to a full-time fire department. So the decision to do that was made at a time when there was funding specifically...I don't want to say... You can't earmark in local government, but it was targeted specifically for that purpose. So it was a good plan, it was a good reason, and it's hard to believe the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pulled the rug out under that one, too. So I hope no one's listening from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts right now. So I think that's worth pointing out because that's something that may come up again. We did have some significant...we did have to increase our animal control budget. And if you...this...you, again, I keep saying you may recall, but I think you all may recall that this is last year, our animal control officer retired. He was extremely part-time. So we were...the police department was nice enough to offer, that may be the appropriate term, to offer to take over the animal control function, which it really does belong there for a number of reasons. Number one, it gets it out of our office, which is the most important one. But everything that comes through the police department dispatch is documented. And that was a problem that we had and a lot of towns have, was documentation with regard to animal control. And it's really more of an integral public safety function now than it ever was. So this is the first year, this past year, when we had a full-time animal control officer, and we had to add, you know, an animal inspector, which is essentially more of a... It's actually, I think, by statute, a border health function. But that's something that has been absorbed by the police department, too, because it kinda runs hand-in-hand with animal control. So that's what you will see in the budget that makes those line items pop out a little bit if you are looking at each individual line item. We do have...it's not in the budget specifically, but the additional library funds are...have been committed by the Friends of the Library, and it is our intent to use those for some additional staffing in the library, as one would expect. And I know that the Friends have been very helpful, I know, with about $50,000 a year now for a number of years. So this is, you know, we...certainly, you can't ask for a more generous group. So obviously, when they donate money, we obviously wanna use it for the library, even though they didn't necessarily specify it. We are gonna get an updated letter from them, making sure that it's clear and really for Tim's purposes what those...or the realm of things those funds can be used with. But I bring this up really to kind of to point out, you know, how much we appreciate the Friends, and if there is some staffing increase, that will be where it is, and because the money is being granted to the town. Doesn't seem like much, but we've been asked the question, number one, the fireworks will be on July 3rd, and they're being funded from the Recreation Revolving Fund, and that's why you don't see it as a budget line item. Very important to some people. And the school department did a really, I think, a really good presentation. I think I even have it attached to this one, but I'm not gonna go through their presentation when they had their public hearing with the school committee. But just to summarize some of their budget drivers, the curriculum updates, collective bargaining, they've got five unions this year they're trying to close agreements with, and other fixed costs. Obviously, I'm not qualified to speak to those, but what I think is very, very important to know is that 33% of their school budget this year, this isn't including transportation costs, is required special education services. Of their entire operating budget, it's 33%. That's astounding. And I think, you know, it's safe to say we don't have a choice. But the other...and I was talking to somebody in another town recently, and we were lamenting... Everyone in this room has heard it from me. I think all I do is whine these days when it comes to the numbers. But we were lamenting, you know, the same thing, that increasingly, special education is becoming a larger and larger part of budgets, and that we don't have the ability to control a lot of those factors. And, you know, some would say, and in some cases, it's true, that trying to, you know, get...keep students in district rather than have to, you know, have out placements can save you money. Well, it can under certain circumstances, but fundamentally, you have to have the place to put the... You know, appropriate places to put students before you can even hire teachers. And of course, there's a huge cost that comes with that. What happens, though, and again, feel free to correct me, is what that...on the tail end, it allows you to save money on transportation costs, which is a growing issue, and you'll see that in a moment. And another one of my highlights is people don't understand is that a massive chunk of what we do in local government is comply with laws. The larger costs, most of those laws, we don't make ourselves. And, you know, so special education being probably the largest of those. Okay, you can probably read this. Our increase in special education transportation itself this year is 1 point...almost $1.3 million, which exceeds our additional levy by about $300,000. So our additional tax dollars are gone. They're already gone, but plus that. And if you use...if you look at the special education transportation and all of our shared costs combined, those two items exceed all of our increase in tax levy and all of our increase in state aid, just those two items alone. And we have little or no ability to impact those. And let me just show you...I'm sorry, how did I... All right, I'll go...I'll do...run through this quickly anyway, but about $2 million...over $2 million of our budget, 2.5 million are items that we don't appropriate. So when we look at having $67 million spending plan, about $65 million of that are appropriations we make, but there are assessments that come, that are...that the state has that we have no ability to alter. We simply have to pay those assessments. And I do list those and define those in the next couple slides, but I will point out... Does anybody have any questions about any of these? Again, some of the definitions, you'll see, like special education. You see that that is to partially reimburse state...the state for providing special needs education to children enrolled in state hospitals. So that's not...that's, once again, we have...we don't make that...we don't make that decision as to how much that money should be. Mosquito control, that's for assessing us for those costs. Air pollution control program, it's not significant, so no need to... I think charter school is a fairly large one. Sending tuition, it assesses the municipality or school district for pupils attending charter schools. And they are assessed against the sending district and paid to the charter school district. So we are, as you can see, losing quite a bit of money versus... And school choice, I don't know if...not to put you on the spot, Mo, but can you speak just real quickly about school choice tuition, sending tuition, as well, you know, versus the charter school?
Mr. We...sorry, thank you. We have a lot of students go to Douglas, Dudley, Oxford. You can be accepted into the other school districts, and that money comes off the top. I believe it was 7,500. It was between $5,000 and $7,500 a student, unless they have specialized costs, and those are charged to the district above the base costs for those students. So it works similarly like charter school tuition. It comes off on the cherry sheet. And then the school district, for any students that we receive, we get tuition in the same manner.
Yeah, if I could ask you a question?
Yes.
So this year, the school choice amount went down. Is that the beginning of a trend, or what do you...
Well, I would like to say yes. I hope so. That's what we wanna see. We wanna see kids coming back to Webster and coming to our schools and not leaving. So that is always our goal, and having kids come back to Webster. I hope it's part of a trend. It's something we work very hard to for, and when people are leaving, we ask why they're leaving. What can we do differently? Sometimes it's personal preference. Sometimes we have parents who are working in other districts. They wanna take their kids with them. Sometimes, which even happens here, we might have kids who are here, and then they move to another district, and they wanna finish the year in that school district, so they ask if they can stay. Those similar things like that. But yes, I hope it's a trend.
I know historically, new facilities will...
Yes.
...keep or bring people back to district.
Yes, we did see that with Park Avenue.
Yeah.
When we opened Park Ave, we actually opened that capacity, and we were well under that before we built the building.
I just have two questions. What's the per-student tuition for the charter schools? Because I might be mistaken, but aren't those for-profit organizations, the charter schools?
They are treated like public schools, similar to public schools? They are considered like a public school? I don't have their individual...I don't know it off the top of my head.
Is it different for our middle school, elementary, high school?
Different depending where you go. I'm not...I don't have the per-pupil cost.
How many...do you know how many... Well, how many pupils would you estimate are in that? Because that's an easy division.
Charter schools, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't have the number.
And my second question is, what's the criteria for applying for school choice?
Depends on the district. So that's an individual district. For Webster, we have people to apply to us by October 1st of the year. So we accept students in based on our enrollment.
Okay. So there's no criteria as far as...
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Okay, so that, again, explains some of the, what we call, amounts to be raised or other. So... So this is really the real meat and potatoes here, is our shared costs. Our shared costs, and again, shared costs are those costs that are really deducted, the total amount that are deducted before we are...we kinda have so-called discretionary-type funds, which then are divided on a 70/30 basis with the school department. So the shared costs, again, snow and ice removal, road improvements. We...a couple of years ago, we did start to put separate funds away to help augment Chapter 90 funds that are used by state funds that are used for road maintenance. Retirement assessment, debt service, regional school assessment, school transportation and crossing guards, property casualty, health, Medicare, OPEB, and unemployment. As you can see, you know, these are almost entirely items that, once again, we really don't have much ability to control, and all of which, I mean, for instance, you know, we obviously have to remove ice and snow. Usually, we're paying for them, you know, the year after. But retirements, that's a fixed number that's given to us. Debt service obviously is fixed based upon what the town has voted. Regional school assessment is fixed. Property casualty, health insurance, those are...they're not fixed, but they are essentially...essentially fixed when push comes to shove. Medicare, OPEB is not fixed. We have to make our own...we make our own decision as to what we're going to budget. However, we are not budgeting, like most towns, as much as we could or should to get to... to get to, you know, to the, to get, hit the amortized schedule. Does people know what OPEB is? Okay, yeah, Tim, why don't you explain OPEB?
Other post-employment primarily is health insurance for retirees. Some other thing.
Okay.
So, so the?
If I may, could I ask a question on OPEB? So right now, it's optional or variable amount. Do you anticipate that becoming a fixed amount or mandatory amount or percentage in the upcoming year or two years, three years?
I have not heard discussion to that point. And I think some of it is really considering the whole, you know, the whole realm of state mandates, I think that's, that ones, the state's just hasn't gone there yet. And I don't hear talk of that yet.
So I don't want to jump around too much, but you must be getting close on your fully paid date on your retirement benefits on the pension, probably two thousand thirty-two, thirty-three?
Thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-four.
And again, I don't want to get off topic too much, but, I mean, OPEB needs to be funded as well. I'm sure, I know you, Tim, you're probably right on top of this. Are you planning on when that falls off to supplement it here, or?
So to answer your first question, there has been, I want to say, limited discussion as far as required funding for OPEB. The limited discussion that I've heard is probably nothing is going to happen until retirement pensions are fully funded, which is right now supposed to hap, or required to happen by twenty forty. So we're expecting, if we stay on schedule, to be fully funded, probably in fiscal twenty thirty-four. The select board had voted a policy to fund OPEB at a minimum of a hundred thousand, beginning in FY twenty, increasing two and a half percent each year. And then when the retirement is fully funded, we are supposed to take some of that savings from that point and increase our OPEB contribution.
The reason I ask the question is, I just want to be as assured as possible that there's not an upcoming budget buster in this regard in the next couple of years, and it doesn't sound like there is, that's all.
With regard to OPEB?
With regard to?
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
I have one question about that OPEB, too. So healthcare benefits in retirement isn't part of the CBA with teachers, police, fire?
No, it's by statute.
Okay.
State statute requires it. Probably just as well. Unless firefight, it's going to be tough, Mike. Okay, so, so those are your shared costs. Now, now, now look at the numbers on shared costs, okay? A pension assessment is of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. We all know debt service because the, most of that increase is in our debt exclusion. School transportation, you know, again, one point three million dollar increase. Now, some of that might be, I don't know if that's safe to say, a little bit misleading because we did use, well, I think it's not misleading, it's, that over and above our, the amount we budgeted last year, we did need some, for those of you who were at the town meeting last year, know that we did have to use some, some funding to close that gap at the end of the year. So it wasn't a shock, we had to build that into the budget this year. Health insurance is ten, ten percent, we're budgeting it a little bit higher than that, which we always do to try to account for any movement, planned movement, or additional, additional people on our, on our plan. So, again, if you, and, and by the way, ten percent is, is beating medical inflation significantly. I think it's a fourteen percent right about now, medical inflation, and one of the lowest increases on our health group this year. So, you know, again, Medicare is, not as, but if you, if you, you know, you put all this together, you know, in the context of having one million dollars more in tax levy, and about a little over one and a half million more dollars in state aid, it obviously, it's, you know, we're working backwards to start, we're to be, we're working backwards right out of the gate. So this is what we're proposing with regard to free cash, and how this all works together, how this makes the, the budget work. And then we'll get into a little bit of the explanation as to why one point three million is the number we're looking to use. So our free cash right now is a balance of six and a half million dollars, once again, that's, to say it's significant is an understatement, it's, we try to maintain a healthy capital improvement program. Snow and ice removal are over expenditure, we have to close at the end of the year. We have a gap on our general liability insurance, and some of the reason for that is, maybe entirely, is the fact that we, you know, when you're updating your facilities with major construction projects, that catches up to you a year or two after. Stable, and we want to replace the money that we used from the stabilization fund last year to actually close the gap we, in special education last year. So looking to replace that and get the stabilization fund back to where it was at another, at about six million dollars again. So there's your one point three million. And of course, we are looking to maintain, you know, it's fairly modest, but our partnership, we agree, we entered into last year, handshake partnership with the state and the Lake Association to contribute to lake maintenance. That will leave us with about three point three million in free cash still. So keep in mind now, we've got about six million in, in stabilization, when this is all said and done, still a three point three, a healthy three point three in free cash. And we feel we can, there's rationale for that, I know, I'll get to that in a few moments here. Go ahead.
I just wanted to offer a, an update, so there's been some additional requests, so after, there's been four hundred thousand dollars for school transportation, and then we received an additional ten thousand dollars for that capital improvement for camera, I think, yeah, dash, N dash cameras, or, you know, in cruiser cameras. Got a request from, to go up to thirty-five thousand from twenty-five thousand, that came in this afternoon, this morning. So the new number is, you know, if everything were approved, is a little bit closer to two million nine hundred thirty thousand. But still, still very much within the financial policies, and definitely towards the higher end.
Okay, so, Tim's update there, so we'll have about three million in free cash and still about six million in stabilization. Okay, and like I just said, adding that five hundred fifty thousand dollars back to stabilization. So, sure, go right ahead.
I was on the school committee for a long time, so I had two quick questions. One was, are we now, do we have accurate figures from the state for reimbursement on transportation, and that's why we're going with this number, or is it possible that there could be more money coming?
Well, here's, here's the great news, we don't get reimbursement for transportation.
Okay, so I come from a regional school district, so I don't, okay. Yeah, okay. I was on the Dudley and Charlton district. And the other question I had was, just for me, stabilization versus free cash, to me, it's one and the same, I don't know, just a quick primer on the difference?
Other than there being separate statutes, the biggest thing with stabilization, if you're going to appropriate from stabilization, it requires two-thirds, and I believe free cash is a simple majority. So those are the biggest differences.
And if you don't spend your free cash by the end of the fiscal year, it becomes part of what becomes, it becomes part of what you're certifying for the following year. So it's not, it's not like you've got three million here, six, you have three million, if you end the fiscal year with three million, well, then you're, the books are balanced after that with any funds that are coming in, you know, over and above. So, you know, one of the things that we want to point out is that that three million dollars, we have reasonably will be, free cash will be almost as strong as it is now, so that beginning FY twenty twenty-seven will be in a same relative position with regard to savings between the two, so. Now?
One other thing. So Rick actually, when he was speaking, reminded me, one real important difference is free cash expires June thirtieth, so July one, there is no free cash until it's certified. So if you have a town meeting and free cash hasn't been certified, you can't vote from free cash, you could only vote from stabilization funds. So that is a potential timing difference.
All right, so, so the question that if you haven't already formed it in your mind is, you know, why the number one point three million? Because even with that, you know, cuts had to be made, the school department had to cut about roughly half a million dollars, roughly four to five hundred thousand dollars. Right, yeah, even with the, to get down to a three point eight, no, not from your request, from level, from level services.
From, just from increasing our costs, just from looking at contractual and special ed costs, so adding nothing else in, we had to reduce from that.
And the same relative proportion, because keeping in mind, it's a seventy-thirty split of available revenue, the town also had to make reductions of about one, one-third of that amount, too. So it's not, it's not as if we figured, okay, well, let's find a number that's going to cover our, because we got, hell, we got a lot of savings here. What we try to do is target that one point three for a couple of reasons. Number one, it, that number, as you can see, is pretty darn close to the increase in special education costs. So to the extent that we can get people's attention, that's where your free cash is going this year, that's where it's going, okay? Just to, you know, just to handle an increase in, you know, expenses attributable to special education. The, the other reason is that, and we don't know this entirely, but we're not going to be spending any stabilization this year proposed, so. And what is anticipated is at the end of the current fiscal year, we will have significant revenue over and above what we projected for this fiscal year. And the reason for that is in the area of investment income. Right now, there's a significant amount of money coming in, going through the treasury because of our major borrowings for our capital, capital projects, and that is increasing our receipts for the current fiscal year significantly, which has not been projected. So we know we're going to close out revenue to this fiscal year, which will become part of next year's free cash, too. So you're build, you're building approximately off your three million dollars, and it's a, you know, complicated calculation Tim has to work with, but just, you know, in general, in terms of big numbers. So you're more or less adding the, the investment income that's over and above projection, and next year, where, in FY twenty twenty-six, our revenue estimates do not include investment income at a level that we, that we could, that we could project. Because if we start projecting revenue that we know is going to fall off as soon as, as soon as these projects, you know, dwindle a bit, that's, that's not doing us any favors either. And again, some of that's just a matter of, you know, what's the word, perspective or choice, how do you want, because we could just project those significant amount of more funds in that revenue category, and we'd be in a different place in terms of our overall budget. Again, you know, it's a, it's really a matter of form over substance to some extent. We don't know that we're going to be able to, between, you know, unbudgeted revenue from this year, we don't know that we're going to be able to end up with about six hundred thousand dollars in free cash next year, but we know it's going to be pretty darn healthy. And again, it's going to leave us with, again, in relatively the same position going into FY twenty twenty-seven with, you know, we know over a million dollars in reserves between twelve million dollars in reserves. I keep selling you short here, Tim, I'm sorry about that. So that's why the one point three, it's, it's not as if we can point to something and say, this is why, or this is why, it's kind of a combination of factors that say, that's, that's the right number, it doesn't bail us out, there are still, I know there's some staffing reductions that had to be made anyway, but we think going above that would really begin to be, would be irresponsible, because we don't really feel we could, we're not confident that we can end up, you know, recovering, you know, the, you know, the savings, the one-time funds. If we, we didn't think we could recover those to a great extent, one point three million wouldn't be the number, and we would, we'd be looking at a lot of pain this year. The obvious question becomes, well, what about FY twenty twenty-seven? Well, part of the thought process there is, well, we hope to be in the same relative position in terms of our savings, savings accounts combined. We also have to have some reasonable belief that we won't be looking at another massive increase in special ed transportation. I mean, one point three million is, is just off the charts, so it's hard to believe, and maybe I shouldn't say this, that, that next year, in terms of its overall budget impact, would be nearly as, as impactful. Because what we're seeing this year is really catching up from last year.
Rick, I have a couple of questions. So with the, cuts the Department of Education federally, and if it actually gets cut and dissolved, that money is going to stay with the states, and Mass being a giver state, not a taker state, so to speak, there should be more funds in the state of Mass for education, if that's what ends up happening. Would that, if that does occur, would that be something that would be budgeted and forecast for twenty twenty-seven? Because once this is done, funds coming in would be earmarked for the following fiscal year.
Well, I don't, I'm going to jump if you don't mind.
Well, you know what?
Just speculating, but I have read a lot about that.
I like your speculation, however.
Yeah, I don't anticipate getting any more funds from, you know, what would happen, in a best case scenario, is the same amount of funds that we get from our federal money, we would get one hundred percent of that from our state money, but we're not going to get any more than that. We have about, just two of our bigger grants is about one point five million dollars, and that doesn't include the Title II, the Title III, the Title IVs that we have, which are smaller amounts, but I mean, they still fund professional development, teacher growth, they pay for our instructional leaders that we have that support our schools and programming. So it would be devastating to lose that. We fund a lot of our paraprofessionals through our special education grants, so, you know, I don't see any additional revenue coming to the school districts, even if it goes to the state.
But we don't, we don't even know if those, just, you know, if the funding itself would be, would be reduced or completely cut, we don't, I mean, that could happen, we just don't know.
The second question was back to the free spending. So when those are written for the warrant, there's a lot of specificity in those, so there must be some strings attached to some of that money that is going out, I would imagine, because if I'm in the audience to vote on it, I would want to know specifically what that money's being given to, as opposed to blue sky, and then at the discretion of the different departments, like is it specifically earmarked? And I'm thinking of one because I was in the meeting with the association to get money for the lake, and now I'm just wondering, that was very well received last year. I'm wondering if there's not specifically, you know, a cause and effect with that money, could some of the people that aren't using the lake, live on the lake, are around the lake, start to say, you know, is this going to be an annual line item?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if that was specifically said, you know, for weed treatment, because we discussed that before. Then I think you can, I think you can certainly get behind a specific, that's my only question.
Well, there's two, two pieces to that. One, the one point three million that we're proposing, you know, in budget spending, is that is just, used as an overall revenue source to fund the budget. There are other items that I, I know that's what you're referring to, I know was, our capital plan is broken out by specific items. I know was, our capital plan is broken out by specific item. I'm not sure if I'm in the right. Okay, yeah, so, so if you look at this list here, you know, the 939,000 is specific to our capital improvement plan, which is a separate article listed item by item by item. Snow and ice removal is a separate, specifically a separate article. Liability insurance, again, these are, these are end of year. Number one is the capital improvement program for FY 2026. 250, the 250 and the 70 are to essentially balance those accounts for the end of FY 2025. Stabilization fund is, that speaks for itself, that's a separate article. The skipping down the Webster Lake maintenance, that's a separate article. So there'll be no question what that's being spent for. The 1.3 for, to be used, that we're proposing to use as a budget revenue source, that's not broken down specific, that's just part of the overall pie to help fund the budget. So the, obviously, you can, you can do the math. The overwhelming majority of what you see here as proposed free cash is specific to a, to a certain, specific to a cause. And I say, as you know, we did kind of make that handshake commitment last year. And I think, I mean, I think it's, I almost wish we could do more because I think it's just, I think it's completely unfair, you know, that anybody but the state has to take care of the state's property.
I couldn't agree more. That's why I was asking. Because I know, I remember last year's meeting, there was somebody that continuously was challenging some of the warrant items. And I think the more specific you can be, the harder it is to disagree.
Sure.
Because you're saying this is specifically targeted for this, you know, the use of the lake and people from out of town that come in, pay the fee at the gate, et cetera, et cetera. But, yeah, that was my main question.
Okay. So I lost my train of thought a little bit.
So, just out of curiosity, can we move on to the enterprise fund?
There's a summary right there, okay? So enterprise funds, yes.
Will has a question.
Go ahead, Will.
It's a small amount of money, Tim, but I think it's 49,000 from the sewer enterprise fund. The indirects cost went down, and about 1,000 for the water. Why is that? I mean, for those who don't know, that's money that goes to the general fund of services that they provide for the utilities. Why did they go down?
So basically, for FY 25, specifically, I think in water, there was a spike in debt service. And so that had an impact with the formula. So that is a lot of it. The other part of it was when the FY 25 calculation was done. The code enforcement fund expenditures were pulled out of the general fund, but code enforced those expenditures, still should have been part of the calculation, but they were not. So when you take the combination of a decrease in debt service for water and sewer, and then putting those costs back into the denominator, it basically changed the formula, and so that's why there's a small decrease for both.
Okay. It's only 50 grand, but 50 grand is still 50 grand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And those, if you look at what's up there, it's those, those items that I highlight in blue. Those are the sewer and water indirect funds, indirect costs. And those are, those are essentially your benefits and your administrative costs that the town, that the water and sewer funds depend upon, town staff, et cetera. Those are reimbursed to the general fund through, through this way. So, I'm sorry, Matt, what was your question?
Just wondering if we could move on to the sewer, to the enterprise funds. If there are any other questions for the budget, I mean, it's.
I mean, the line items kind of, I pointed out the line items that are, that have any, any type of significant change. And again.
I have just one question, if I could. Because we had a brief conversation last year. I'm concerned about the police consistently asking for help and not getting it. I know, and it's very generous that you're giving them all the technology that they need. They're losing people. They got people out injured, they have people, you know, transferring to other agencies. And the overtime fund must be, must have seen increase to cover staffing. And I know last year he was looking for people, and we couldn't do it. And it seems like the same thing is happening this year. And is there a plan to sort of, I mean, public safety is very important to the people in the community. And our chief is recommending personnel. And I can't speak for the chief, but it's what I see in the budget.
Oh, yeah.
And so I'm curious if there's a plan, if not this year, and it wasn't last year, in the near future, in the next year, is there a?
Well, I know when we met with the chief in our budget discussions internally, the chief makes an obviously compelling, we, he is correct. We could use some, in fact, in my mind, that's, that's the top of the list. When you're looking at this construct right now, I can't say it's imminent. I wish I could, but I can't say it's imminent. So we, so we have some easing of fixed share costs. Hard to do any planning, unfortunate. But, you know, we have, you know, other departments that express need some more. Everybody's right, but this, this certainly comes to, rises to the top. I mean, there's other items for the last couple of years I thought we could weaken this. We don't have, don't have any professional building, maintenance, oversight, professional. We've got a lot of town buildings. People talk about the buildings that are old buildings. Well, the new buildings have very complicated modern systems, and they need to be monitored, you know, fractional contractors, documentation, troubleshooting. And we don't, to me, that's a real weakness we have. But, yeah, we, sure, Meek and Lisa could, could point out handfuls of, of the types of needs that almost don't even get to the plate. But not a great answer, there isn't a plan. I can tell you that from our perspective, those police, police, additional police staffing is at the top of. We could fund a new position tomorrow, another position, it would be in the police. Wish I had a better answer, but again, when you're dipping into your rainy day fund to keep the trains running, I had a better answer. But you're right, chief's right, we're right. It's, and, you know, and this, this is speculation. But if you went back, maybe it's not good speculation. But if the town hadn't already committed to transitioning to a full-time fire department, maybe there'd be a little room, but I don't know that there'd be more room. And how do you balance, how do you balance those? You know, I mean, I can, I can tell you, and some of you are already well aware, that, you know, having a full-time fire department has already saved some lives. You know, it's already saved lives. And we, you know, I'm not going to tell you names, but we know that's the case. And so, you know.
I fully support full-time fire, right?
Oh, yeah.
And when I looked at the budget, and I had a brief conversation with Matt, and when I look at the salaries of our firefighters in comparison to our police officers, and they both serve in that role of public safety, putting themselves at risk, there's a distinct difference in salaries. And I know in the future that will start to grow. But, you know, when I look at law enforcement, and obviously I come from the police world and retired police executive, but, you know, I'd call for service, increased needs for public safety. And I just would like to hear that could be an opportunity, or there's a, you know, a vision for the future. Back in the day, they had cops, more cops, faster, had grants. You could get police officers, and then after the third year, the town absorbs the cost.
And we did that.
Right.
We did that. We did that, but that's what kind of was the beginning of our, or close to the beginning of our fire, full-time fire department too. And, and we could certainly, I know the chief has discussed with us, you know, again, applying for more grants. But once again, I think what town a few years back did that, were able to get some police officers, you had every reason to believe that you could then pick up the cost in three years. Right now, Phil, if we could, you know, if we had a, if we had a clearer vision of what two or three years down the road was going to look like, oh, that would, that would definitely be there. I think if you look at calls, whether it's police or even animal control, calls for service versus some other towns, chief compares some of the dynamics to Southbridge. Look at the relative staffing versus calls. Off the charts, I mean, in terms of how much staffing we need. In fact, you know, talking about salaries, and I don't know why I've got this up there. It's no value to what we're talking about right now.
But on the police thing, I just, and I want to.
No, but before, it was my train of thought. We did, you know, this was our first collective bargaining agreement with our firefighters. We were looking to, you know, target, obviously wanted to target a certain, certain wages at a certain point in time because, and firefighters are wonderful to deal with. Of course, they know full well that, you know, you don't walk in the door and end up being, you know, we're trying to, trying to get them over, over a number of years to at least a more of a competitive place to be. And during that process, you know, we lost four of our firefighters already to go to other departments. Just, you know, and again, to pay. I mean, you don't have to be the, you know, the Cadillac, but you, you have to, you have to, you know, be competitive. And we've tried to do that, and that's what, you know, your budget reflects that. So, I mean, obviously, there's nothing worse than hiring, training, outfitting, and then losing.
Right.
You're spending an awful lot of money to, to, to help other jurisdictions who aren't helping us very much, by the way, so.
On the other side of that, I want to commend you and your, and your financial team because when I've looked at all the equipment that the police and fire have requested, whether it's cameras, body cameras, technology inside their police department, purchasing of new vehicles, you guys have always been extremely supportive of the police, and I know you are. You know, I just, and I hope, and I'm sure it's the same for the fire department. And I'm very happy as a resident that we have full-time fire rescue. I really am.
Thank you.
And, but I would, you know, hope that maybe we could give this, I know you gave me that thought. You know, I'm passionate about making sure our community is safe and that we could, at some point, look at that staffing and try to do something to increase the number, if we could. That's, yeah.
Very, very fair statement.
Just going to make the comment that all of, all of our departments, we work really hard to work together for our community as a whole. And I just think we're all faced with the same struggles. The revenue that we're getting is not keeping up with all the compliance needs and the fixed costs across our community, and we just can't afford them all. And it's really, you know, we're reducing four positions this year because we can't keep up with the costs. And I think we're all in the same boat.
And that's using, and that's using some savings.
Right, right. So I think we all agree with you 150%. It's just unfortunately, we have limited resources coming in that are available to us.
And I would say though, to your, to your point too, and I don't want to stray too much here, two points I'm going to make, and I'm probably like hell to remember the second one by the time I'm done with the first one. You know, it is, it is very, very important to have good equipment for our public safety people. I, I know, never had to do what some of you gentlemen have done. However, I do know that quality of, and the safety of the equipment you're using can be a problem also, forgetting about people's safety. But in terms of retaining talent, you have to, people have to feel safe. Or they have to feel, it's not like people want toys, people have to feel safe. So it's, that's, you know, when you look at our capital plan, a lot of it is very public safety related. Some, some things that, you know, had to be explained to me, you know, what they need. They're highly, this is highly technical stuff today. You know, this, this isn't like, you know, you know, an old Crown Vic for, you know, $18,000. And then now your police are all set to go for you. It's not, it's not like that anymore. But it's, it's very important to have good equipment, and there's a cost to it. And people have been, not just when I've been here, but in the years past, very supportive of that. And it's only, the needs are only getting more and more complex and more technical. And we have to, that's, I don't want to say it's, I don't want to compare it relatively to compensation, but it's all part of the mix.
Oh, yeah.
It's all part of the mix. The, the other thing I just want to point out that, you know, before, almost before anybody sees anything, any numbers, you know, the people in this room have already sat down, we've met with all the departments, and, and we've, we've beat this to death, okay? And I know that's not the way it works everywhere, okay? And when I put something in front of you, it's something we've already all agreed could be a plan that works. So, you know, and yes, some of it is trying to make everybody else, else's life easier. But it's also, it's also the right thing to do. Because we can't be walking into public forums pointing fingers and fighting. And it doesn't, it doesn't benefit anybody. And realistically, to put a board of selectmen or a school committee or a finance committee in the position of having to mediate fights and determine what's most important, that, that's horribly, you know, inappropriate. And we are paid to make this all work. You know, you don't get paid to make this work, you know? So we really take that very seriously, that before, you know, anybody, you know, puts out anything in front of anybody that, that we've already beat it up real good. We've analyzed, we've, I don't want to say we're as fought, but we've, we've cried a little bit, I mean practically. So, so when this, when this gets to you, this has been refined and refined and refined. And it's not pretty, but it's a unified proposal. It might have my name on it, but it's really a group effort. It includes everybody, even the school department and everybody else. So, and again, I feel it's important for people to know that. They know that's not the way it is everywhere. I know everybody, maybe not Christina yet, but everybody, everybody here knows that that's not, that's not the way it is. Will?
Through you, Matt. I've been, I, we had a meeting last week, or wait, in the formal discussion. And I've been going through this. My biggest issue with it was the free cash. But I can see, my mind was put at ease last week when you talked about it. In this case, it's a plan for replenishing, which is, really puts my mind at ease for that. Still don't like it, but the alternative is we'd have to find a lot of cuts even further than what we already have. Though I'm comfortable with it, and I just want to commend the administration for coming up with it, for finding a way to replenish it, and, and also having the other reserves for the future years. But as you know, because I, as we've talked about, and I'm sure you're thinking exactly what I am, something's going to change because the train is getting.
I agree, yes.
Getting to a bridge that isn't there in a few years.
Yeah, like the one in Dudley.
Right.
We know. That's a whole other issue, I don't need to get into. But I, I appreciate that, Will. You know, as I say, our goal is to kind of be in the reasonably same place next year without having really, a whole lot of harm and buying time. Because we do know there's going to be some reassessment of the education formula in this state. May not be during this fiscal year, but I, State Rep expects it within two years. I don't know that's going to happen, but the beauty of reserves is it buys you time. You know, and as long as you're not getting deeper in a hole, that's why it's important. And again, I, you know, again, I obviously have to give Tim an awful lot of credit for kind of configuring how this, how this could work for us so that we're not putting ourselves in a, in a hole, a deeper hole next year. We can get, kind of, you know, kind of hold the fort the best we can. And I'm not sure we, I don't know we can do that, okay? But this gives, we have a good chance to do that. We have a chance to see if some of these shared costs ease next year. So we have a little more, you know, spending capacity to, and. So we have a little more, you know, spending capacity to, and if things don't look like in the next few years, well, savings gives you time to make. So, you know, more well-thought-out reductions than just, oh, my God, we have to have a town meeting in the fall to balance the budget, like the old days, okay? If we have to spend money next fiscal year, you know, savings next year, understanding that that's buying us time to make some significant cuts for the following year, rather than do it in a fire drill capacity, then that's what we have to do. But at least, so I appreciate your comments on that, but, you know, we're not fooling ourselves here.
Okay. So part of the public hearing is the sewer budget, the water budget, and the code enforcement? Can we just cover those real quick?
Sure. I'm going to, Tim, I'm going to let you take those. In fact, I'm pretty sure I have it here. Thought I had it right here.
I mean, they're pretty much level service. I mean, I'll take questions, but you've got the reports and the numbers. So I don't want to spend, you know, a bunch of time going over stuff you don't have any questions on.
No, I'm just trying to make sure we hit the nails on the public hearing to make sure it's...
Yeah, I mean, the water and sewer budgets were, I believe, voted on by the Water Sewer Commission, or they were aware of it. I know they're in the process of updating the rate study to make sure that we anticipate having the revenues. The code enforcement budget is a decrease, I think from 715 to 603. A lot of that is personnel, some of it's personnel not having, taking health insurance. So that's, I guess, a brief summary. If there's anything specific, I'll go over specifics.
Any questions on the enterprise funds? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion?
Motion made and seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. Not for nothing, but I think the discussion on the fiscal 2026 proposed operating budgets has taken place during the public hearing, so we'll skip over that. Request for finance reserve transfer. Tim, you want to just go over the...
Yeah, I believe both of these are now multiple months old. So, but the requests came in, library havoc system, you know, they weren't anticipating. Same thing with the police station havoc. They actually have had some additional costs in the police with the havoc. But what they, the amount listed there is what they had requested for the finance committee transfer.
Okay. There any questions on the transfers from the reserve fund? Okay. Is there a motion to make the transfers?
I make the motion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Transfers are complete. Discussion of the fiscal year 2026 capital improvement program. Is there any...
I mean, really, I mean, the information was provided. So, I mean, if you have specific questions, I'll, you know, try to answer them. But I don't, I mean, unless you really want me to go through it, I'd rather just do it that way, if that's all right with you.
There's pretty good explanations. You really, Courtney pushes people for it as simple as we possibly can.
Hey, so is there a mo, I have a question, if I could. So do we have to vote to make recommendations on the warrant articles? And when do we do that?
Tonight.
You'll be doing that later?
Yes. I believe, oh...
And, well, you have to give those, you add to the budget. You have to...
Take a vote?
Well, you have to provide notice to the selectmen minimum of seven days in advance of town meeting what your recommendation is on the budget. Certainly, you can do that, make any other further recommendations, amendments to that right up to town meeting. So how you want to handle that is...
Okay, so why don't we take a vote to accept the budget as presented by the town administrator and his administration? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? No? All right.
I'd like to thank the financial team.
They've done a fantastic job. Okay, so alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So there's the notification for the selectmen, correct?
Efficient, yeah.
Is there a motion to accept the administration's fiscal year 2026 capital improvement program?
Motion?
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just, I might be working off the wrong agenda. So we can't do the articles tonight because it's not on the agenda. Am I right, Courtney? Yeah, but we had amended agenda, and I haven't...
That's the old one. This is the new one. I don't see it on there either.
Just parliamentary procedure. Can we add that tonight?
I don't see, have the language right?
There is no language, that's...
This is what we have. It's not on the agenda, but these are the warrant articles.
Right, but I'm just saying that...
There's nothing about town meeting. I don't think so either. Okay. No. Okay.
I mean, realistically, what other items are on there that, there's only a couple, financial items?
Correct.
See, what's the white card?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So there's not that much you were to either meet, town meeting, or it's not like...
Okay.
It's not going to, it's not going to, wouldn't take a whole lot of time.
Right, right. Okay. Discussion of finance committee report and report tables? Tim?
What do you want to do? Do you want, I mean, I can, the report can simply state that, I mean, I don't think there's really much to report other than the tables. So, I mean, you want me to just draft that finance committee, you know, is presenting these tables? And, you know, that'll be your report and your tables?
I think the narrative you put in last year was pretty good.
Last year, you had multiple meetings, and there was discussion and stuff. So this year, I mean, I can put in that, you know, the committee met twice, but it certainly won't be as detailed as last year.
And I don't think people are looking for that.
No.
You know, I don't think so. I wouldn't, not my report, but I think less is better to a great extent.
As long as it has the information in the tables, that's fine, from my point of view.
Okay. Proposed future meeting date. Well, no matter what, we're going to meet before town meeting. Just out of curiosity, Courtney, has the town meeting guide already been...
But it is amended as we move along. So it's not a stable document.
Okay.
So I, and once it's printed, you know, it hasn't been, once it's printed, okay, then we consider it done. But every year, it's updated as...
When do you plan on printing?
I don't. You want to screw up a coffee machine? Yeah.
Okay. So next...
You know, I mean, certainly, we could, just, you know, there'd be recommendation to be made at town meeting if that's what you prefer. We don't have to, unless you want to hold a meeting, even if it's, you know, a remote meeting and advance, whatever.
So...
We'll deal with the book however you want us to deal with the book.
Okay. Next Monday, we cannot meet because it's town election, right? Tuesday, could we do Tuesday? You know, the only reason we had a five o'clock meeting last week was to make sure that Rick would be able to attend because he had a prior engagement. And we try to meet on Monday nights just for the simple fact that these poor guys are already here. You know, as, I know Caitlin and Will understand what I'm saying.
Just a question, you know, if we're not holding, if we're not meeting at town hall, why wouldn't finance committee be able to meet? It's because it's election day.
There's a bylaw.
We have an actual bylaw?
Yeah. That, or a town meeting. I read my bylaws.
I won't forget it now. All right. It really hasn't come up, so...
So do we want to try and meet on Tuesday so that, and the reason if we do is we can actually have a discussion about the warrants? And instead of day of and rushing through it, at least this way, we can... Correct, correct. And I think that that's important than doing it on the town meeting floor.
Do we need to make a motion for that, Matt?
Well, we would need a motion for to hold a meeting on Tuesday for whatever time is good for the committee.
What time is good for the committee?
Well, that's a good question, too. I mean, you know...
I'll make a motion. We have a meeting next Tuesday at what time? Six o'clock?
Five o'clock?
At five o'clock.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness, no, the earlier the better. We can hold it at nine in the morning if you want.
So that's my motion, five o'clock. I'll second that.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, just to make it easier for everybody, you know, every once in a while, we should get together, but not too often.
No offense, Rick, but I think we need a mute button. Every now and then.
Oh, for me?
For all of us.
All we need is a delay, you know?
So motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Nope. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Look at, even Tim's voting tonight. Yeah, I can't see that one going as long as this one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming. I hope it wasn't glad you were at home.
Yeah, well, thank you. It's nice to, Mike's new to municipal finance, but everyone...